Thank you for coming without them. But I'm huge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the floor. We don't have any public comment. Thank you.
Nobody's saying anything?
Nope.
All right, I'd like to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. Everybody that's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Consent agenda, or the agenda has been adopted.
Consent agenda. If anyone has any questions about it.
Does anybody have any questions about the agenda?
Consent.
The consent of the agenda?
I'm going to approve the adopt, excuse me, adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion now to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. We'll move on then to reports. Or elementary report?
Oh, no, you're the wall there, though.
I was at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, dear. Thanks for standing out. So I'm Laura Diopondo. This is my second year as principal at George Elementary. I have been in this building for 15 years. I opt for nine, and then I had the opportunity to get an instructional coach. And from that just started to be. First of all, I love this picture that I chose for the top. This little guy on your right, that's exactly how you'll see him with his beautiful facial expressions. And it is back there. So he just makes me giggle every time I walk in the room and see him. And his character is just so unique. I wanted to share with you two different goals that we're working on as a building. Just some background, we, before we identified these goals, we did look at some data, and that kind of drove where we wanted to focus our intentional work, where we're going to spend a lot of time around. And so one of our goals is for our building is for the culture and safety and belonging. Each student feels culturally accepted, safe, seen, heard, and celebrated so they will contribute to a positive learning community. And one of the strategies that we're really being intentional about this year is inclusive collaboration. There's many times on Mondays where educators, classroom teachers, specialists get together and plan. One of the intentional pieces is throughout the both math and ELA units, the teachers identify priority standards and plan and get input from the TBIP teacher, the STEAM teacher, and how they can support students' strengths that they know of and areas of improvement around those different goals that they've identified. When the teachers create a goal, the grade level teachers, it's called a SMART goal, which is we ask them to be specific, measurable, attainable, results-oriented, and time-bound. So making sure that it's manageable throughout a period of time. Last one goal, the other goal, it ties right in with this, is growth and mastery of priority standards. As I mentioned, there are priority standards for each grade. One piece of it is identifying what priority standards are. So teachers are working really hard to identify those and providing opportunities for students to see where they're at growing with those specific priority standards, which entails having a scale, providing students opportunities to check their growth and get feedback on the next steps for attaining the next level. Opportunities for monitoring their growth is important there. All right, those are two big goals that we are working on. If you turn to the back, one way we monitor growth is with a STAR assessment. It's universal, it's a screener. The students are given the STAR assessment in both ELA and math in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And this is one piece of data I wanted you to see. It is the growth that the students have made this year from the fall and the winter. We haven't taken the spring assessment yet. But it categorizes them in three different areas. So a percentage of students that made typical high growth, and then the percentage of students that made low growth. And then right below that is the amount of students that took the assessment. Something I want to celebrate is we've been really intentional. I mentioned identifying priority standards in math. So that's evident in the growth that you see there. Every time this data comes out, the instructional coach and I meet with the teachers and we identify what are some standards that the students are going to need extra supporting and what standards are the students proficient in. So when they're planning going forward, they have ideas of how to support students with specific standards. All right, the next one is a celebration for sure. This is from, it's a WISIF report. So it's the watch and Allison, Gately is going to give you some more information about what this really means. But so here's some data from 2019, 2022, and 2023. And these are scores that we received with different, with the SBA in both math and ELA. So it's percentages of students. They took a percentage of the students that were proficient, a percent of how many students make growth, and attendance rate as well. So then that's how we're identified with the school improvement framework. And I'm super proud of those scores. In from 2022 to 2023, we almost doubled that score numbers there, the overall score. And as I mentioned after this, Allison's going to kind of explain it. So I thought this is, this is a great piece of information for you guys to see for now. Will she explain what the scale is? Yeah, okay, great.
And then I know Allison's going to explain it. But Laura is also being very humble and modest. I'm not going to brag on George. They are not identified as a school of improvement. And the majority of our schools are. But George is not. They're doing an amazing job out here.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Everybody here does an amazing job. All right, I wanted to share with you some ways we offer, we ask for student voice and choice. We have a 30-minute block of time that the students go up to recess in the afternoon. And so we want to really provide opportunities for students to experience some activity or have a different experience that maybe they don't have throughout the school day. So in order to find out what those activities are and what the students' interests are, so we can provide opportunities for them to be into clubs and so on, we gave them a survey. And the top results for the survey this year were they wanted to practice drama, a play, art, they love art, and another highlight was origami. So throughout the winter months, we offer these kind of clubs for kids. A lot of them don't like to go outside. So we've been fortunate enough to this year offer opportunities for kids to be in clubs. And our very first time at having a drama club, there's a picture there of a parent professional that was overseeing that. I thought we would get more interest, but the Kinder Infrastrators were our big participants with that. So they performed the Goldilocks and Free Bears for the school. They practiced it for weeks. Yeah.
I did see that online.
Wasn't that great? I was so bummed because I wasn't here. And I said, will you? And I know that Jessica video, the whole thing. So, yeah, and the staff really supported in ensuring that. When the parents came, we invited the parents of individuals that were in the play. Another highlight of student voice and choice, the students love doing art. One thing we practice here are we participate in this makerspace. So we give students during lunchtime recess different materials that have been already used. So they reuse them and they create an art piece. So then really just empower students to get a little more creative. In this picture here, our librarian is helping one of the students to help them create a butterfly out of a book that was going to be retired, that nobody was checking out anymore. So she used the book. And I said, now make sure that when they're doing this, they know they can't do this to all the books. Okay, I'll make sure. But that was a, that was a proud moment. And Mrs. Bacon was so happy about that. So one way we encourage student and family engagement is inviting parents in to do some different things we've never tried before. One of the highlights of this year was our father-daughter dance. It was a parent initiated the event. And they organized the whole thing. And it was a way for them to earn funds for the PBC. We had, so a father-daughter dance, there's some pictures here. And then there's a whole bulletin board out there of all the students and dads that came. And we played music for them. We took song requests, took their picture, and provided them with snacks and things. And one of the parents told me afterwards, one of the moms said, my husband's been talking about this experience for weeks. So it's fun. The girls, they dressed up in their fun dresses and just providing an opportunity for families to engage with us and with one another. Next week, we have a mother-son dance. So that's something that we're looking forward to as well. Any questions?
No, I am glad to hear about that father and daughter. It really develops relationships. Right. Tri-Cidings has that. And one of the churches provides a huge map. Everybody wants to go. Because fathers and daughters in particular don't have a chance to interact as they should just because of the busy lives and the schoolwork and what have you. And it really did develop, I thought, in my own daughter's family. It really helped Kim communicate with her on a whole different level instead of being a parent, ignoring her, making her feel special, which is where femininity comes from, from the dad and vice versa. The son gets his masculinity, believe it or not, from his mother because she elevates it. It's a great program.
It was truly a great experience. I participated in it. And I was just burning through the air. So one of the dads, he was running late. And he said, oh, I have to walk away from California. He's a long-haul driver. He's like, I couldn't miss this opportunity with my daughter. So I was really sure to thank them for doing that. And it really just made a difference in the children's lives.
Well, how many governments we've done this year?
We just completed our last, like, family night. We completed our off-class video for it, too. It was focused around math, teaching families how to face certain ones.
Sure, I'll take my questions for Allison.
Okay, okay.
Her data is very impressive in terms of to get some funding to come back out. Is there a reason why there isn't longitudinal data for the Y? On here, is it just?
Yes, because there needs to be at least 10 before, am I right there? So we have 11 to 10. Yeah.
I mean, it's really nice to be able to do it in the mail.
Right.
All the support here and all the hard work and everybody. Ensuring, so I'm proud of us, too.
There are, let me review. We'll move on to the WISA data update.
Hello, good evening. Welcome to the reference department. And I'm honored to be here today to give you an update on our WISIF data. Another beloved acronym. Yes, I'm real excited to learn. In fact, this first slide is just a, a lot of. Yes, that are going to be present and are in the WISIF. We refer to our multilingual learners as multilingual learners, ML, that you'll see in the student support. Also, we're going to talk about the smarter balance assessment, student growth percentiles, students with disabilities. The Longhanded is our state science assessment. WEA access is a family learner assessment. And then WISIF, which we all signed. Now, what that stands for is the Washington School Improvement Framework. And the purpose of it is to report on how Washington State schools are doing. And it's actually a federal accountability requirement. And this is how Washington State reports that information in the Washington State Improvement Framework. So we're going to talk about the different elements of that as we go forward. So our kinder, our elementary school and middle school, they're evaluated in the same four areas. And then high school is evaluated in a little bit different area. So in kindergarten through eighth grade, schools are evaluated in proficiency. And this is ELA and math proficiency specific to the smarter behind assessment. And 40% of that is proficiency, 50% is growth based on the student's growth percentiles. And then obviously, graduation rate doesn't come into play. Elementary, middle, EL progress is specific to the WEA access assessment. So only students who are considered multilingual learners that are still in a program for support take the WEA access. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go. And then the last is the student quality or student success indicator. At K8, it really is just attendance, as Laura had mentioned. But at 912, it's actually a favor score, it's 15%. And it includes attendance, ninth grade success, and dual credit. So in 912, the percentages change a little bit. 30% is proficiency. There is no student growth percentile for high school because you need to have two years in a row with the same assessment to get a student growth percentile. So they don't have that as a measure. Graduation rate is the biggest for the high school. And that's a 50% of the rate. And then they have the EL progress for 5% as well. And just a moment about EL progress. So again, I said, it's just the WEA access assessment. And what it is, is based on last year's WEA access scores for a student, did the student make the progress you would expect them to make from one unit to the next? And if they did, then they need that progress. So the way that the WISIF data is organized is by deciles. And they're essentially comparing all of the schools in the state on common assessment and with common student groups. So each student is assessed and we get a decile score. So you'll see color coding if you go onto the state report card. You can see WISIF data for all schools, it's public information. And they have at one, at the one decile, that means 10% of schools are at a one. And then if you go up the next decile, two, another 10% of schools are at two. So for every decile, it represents a 10% of schools. So if you are at a 10, that means you are in the top 10% of all the schools of Washington State. If you're at a one, you're in the bottom. If you're at the five, you're at about, yeah, about middle. So a really exciting bright spot here in Creston School District is that the EL progress, again, just calculated for multilingual learners on the WEA access scores. Our elementary schools, they all were in that, see that blue side, the blue zone? That means they were over, better than the other schools in the state, essentially. So are the top half, I should say. So those different scores are the different elementary schools or the decile scores for each elementary school. And so we average decile score of eight. I mean, you're an 80th percentile of all the schools in the state for supply. So that is a huge celebration. None of our schools were identified as needing support for EL progress in Creston District, and that hasn't always been the case in the past. We're really proud of the collaboration between support services and regional learning. And so that's a big celebration. Some other bright spots, as mentioned, George joined. Actually, the high school and QIA, who were already in foundational support. So we have three schools, George's the high school and QIA, big picture, that qualify for foundational support. And that's the best WISIF rating that you can get in the state. So that's a huge celebration. George was in that blue zone, so the top half of deciles with a decile of seven to 10, so really that's the top third in both ELA and math student growth percentile. A huge celebration. Also, EL progress and attendance. So really a lot of areas that they are the top ratings. And then there was a seven decile increase in math SGP at George. So that little chart there actually shows the difference between the 2022 scores and the 2023 scores. So in math SGP, they went up from, I think, two to nine. It was a huge increase. So again, huge kudos to George and the work they've done really intentionally here. You can feel the culture, safety, and law needs in addition. So they're really working on those brother masters, guiding standards. So other celebrations, the high school increased a full decile level in ELA and math proficiency, as well as graduation and EL progress. So they're making steady increases across the board, which is exciting. And then in addition to the elementary, all having a blue zone for the EL progress, Monument has a decile of nine in math SGP and EL progress. And Pioneer increased three decile levels in EL progress. So there's definitely a lot to celebrate in comparing those scores from year to year. This year, we learned that we have now six schools who have been identified for support from the state. And so we're going to talk about the different tiers of support. But essentially, if you are identified as needing tier three support, that means that you will get some additional funds to support your school. And there are some additional requirements for your school improvement planning and monitoring. The three schools that are in tier three plus are Ancient Lakes, Mountain View, and QIA. It's a pretty complicated way to calculate how you're in which category. And if you want to ask a lot of detail, the question's going to go into it. But it's pretty complicated. I can show you a visual of it. But essentially, if you are at a certain threshold across the state for all of your students, then you would be in tier three plus. Or if you're at a certain threshold as compared to the state to low graduation rate, then you would be tier three plus. So that's why QIA and Mountain View, you should be in tier three plus. The other three schools are tier three compound. And the compound is one of those extra complications to how the scores are calculated. We, because we are a Title I district, if you have student groups who are under a certain threshold and you're a Title I school, you get, quote, compounded up to a tier three school. Again, complicated, but Monument has been identified specifically to target their students with disabilities. Pioneer has three student groups. So you'll see their school improvement and really needing to focus on their multilingual learners, aesthetic population, as well as low income. And those are the labels that the state uses. And then at the middle school, the two student groups are multilingual and students with disabilities. This next slide gives you a visual of how complicated that. Yeah, but considerations are, there are many different elements, including how many student groups that you have qualified for, as well as if you're a Title I school, what your designation was prior year. So there's multiple things that are in consideration for identifying a school for support. But ultimately, the six schools that are all in the tier three designation will get a varied amount of grant money as long as they meet some minimal qualifications, I guess, as long as they can complete the right paperwork and the right grants. So you'll see there are Ancient Lakes, Mountain View, Pioneer, and QIA will get $5,000 this year. Grant funds and Monument and Middle School. And some of the compliance things that are required to get those funds, um, are you, are assigned a, a district, um, outreach specialist who, who we're working with. Um, and the first task to complete is that each building identified will complete a school improvement plan. That's specific, um, to the requirements. Um, and then, uh, the Quincy School District will also, um, a district. And that aligns with the school plans on how we're going to support the schools. And both, all of those are due by August thirtieth. So, um, those are working really hard to look at their needs assessment, to make sure to align to their required specifications. So I know that was a lot, but I wanted to give you an update. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to.
This is my brother's jail. Give me, they go out of their way to make these. I mean, I'm just, just to the, you know, we.
Yeah, it is complicated. That is based on, so they're trying to actually make it easier based on federal requirements. And there are different, uh, requirements, especially in terms of other, so, so. I, I think they're really are making their best, you know, to, to make it, um, easier, but it, it is complicated.
Yeah.
And that Title One requirement is almost so. As soon as possible, get off the school improvement, it's very difficult to, you know, so the board is done, it's really easy. They're that high. But I would say the more we are thankful with OSPI, we're willing to learn, to work at our companies like Title One, to create it. Um, those grants, those schools like Ancient Lakes, they use, uh, their asset dollars for a really great after-school program. Now that they use those funds to continue to support that after-school program. So there's, there's still a line in this, but sometimes it feels like OSPI does make it feel a little overly complicated. And I would say back when, um, No Child Left Behind came out in the early two thousands, it really felt like the black helicopters were descending on the school, the schools. Uh, it was really punitive, it was, uh, you felt that you were punished, lots of threats, but they're firing a principal for firing the staff. Um, you know, that approach research is really clear, it does not improve student outcomes, it does improve schools. The, the approach that they're taking to have a really strength-based approach, a positive approach, support very targeted groups, um, that does research, that does a lot of research. And that, that's what I am thankful for, that, um, OSPI is, is taking that approach.
The main question was, how far does the Quincy School District rank go?
It depends on what the school decides to use it for. It really depends. Yeah, I mean, if you're going to do it with, you know, use the, use the funds for, um, purchasing a, a large intervention program or something, you're going to track people really fast. If you're going to use it for, um, purchase the R and P after-school, you know, groups to come together, that can be kind of still. So it really depends on how you raise the funds. But what's great about the school improvement plans is that they do have to really think about how were they identified for support and then make a plan very specific to that need. So if it's a student, how are you going to specifically support those, or maybe.
You're always allowing to let your faculty use it.
Yeah.
Okay, great. How much collaboration do the principal do when they're looking? That isn't very much, right?
Right, correct.
No better than OSPI, kind of less. Um, so is there a lot of collaboration from the principal's? Can you look at what George has done getting himself out of that designation? Is there some examination of what is George doing that has made a difference? And how can that be applied? Is it appropriate for a few parts of the other schools? It needs making improvements.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, there's lots of different ways that, that principal collaborate around the school improvement planning. One of the things that we did with our coach, who, um, was supporting George um, and the middle school last year, and Monument, was we brought all of the principals together, whether they had designation or not, and looked at the school improvement plan and how they were monitoring it, and, and gave each other feedback, critical feedback, what's working, what's not, and why. So that's just one way that our administration collaborates. We also have some, um, continual collaborations around our, our, our leadership team meetings, as well as each, um, grade brand of principal, how they feel, see that they meet together and talk about, um, best practice and what's working. But add more, we have more schools where I identify this next year. It will be really good opportunity to follow that model of what really is going to plan together. How, and share, how are we using our resources? Um, are we being honest with the results? But yes, definitely, what, what George has done, I mean, really done, um, some district-wide initiatives really well and taken into the search for, well, whether it be, um, efforts and culture thinking, well, maybe you can really see it here. So.
Well, and, and ten years ago, before we had majority schools, we weren't able to have, um, like, like groups working together in that way.
Right.
But now that we have to take like schools, we have the opportunity to work in these teams.
Agreed, yes. And we're more alike than different, you know, at least in district initiatives, that has a district, we're the curriculum, and then they're just monitoring. So that gives us an opportunity to collaborate more.
Okay, one more question.
Yes.
Um, QIA has been identified for their grad rates.
Yeah.
Part of the purpose of QIA is to support students to be on the on-time graduation.
Yes.
Get a graduation.
Yeah.
So is there, is there any acknowledgement of that in the framework at all? Or is this could be based on on-time graduation?
No, alternative schools are in the same, uh, improvement framework as, as all. And when you look, you'll see, uh, we're in very good company with lots of other alternative schools in that designation. However, the blessing of that is, we get that little bit of extra support, which, uh, you know, helps us have, uh, one extra para, um, para support, plus some time for teams to meet and work on these, on these pieces. So that, that's the blessing of it.
That is being off to, not to, not to steal your thunder for next board meeting's report, but QIA is nearing eighteen students to graduate on QIA, which will be the most. So the supports is how, the target supports, they do work. You know, our buildings have experience, you know, across the district, a high level of success, especially on language, language progress, progress. We have a really good model of being really intentional, really intentional professional development, use of data. Really is now staring out to those other groups with that same model of intentionality.
Thank you for answering the question. I'm not really going to have some too.
I think I have a question. Um, I'll start with, um, QIA. So if they're receiving a grant and based off how they designated, if they need improvement, they get more funds? Or if they're achieving improvement, they're getting awarded more funds? Sorry, I just, I didn't hear this here.
That's a great question. They get more funds because of the, um, the data saying they have a greater need for support. So if they have a lower score or a, you know, again, complicated, um, calculation. But if they're at that tier three plus, they would get more money than if they're at the, of the other tier three. And then if they're the lower, they don't, there's no funding if they're.
Or a.
A consolation prize.
Yeah. George, George, the high school and, um, QIA, big picture, are receiving zero funding because they have the highest score. Yeah.
Well, that, that is kind of a panic, you know, you have this real potential support and these proves to work. The United States is just getting to take that away now. But, yeah. And they prove it, they can use those resources and really target in there with results, so.
And I think George is actually a great example now that they set up this school, I guess, you know, thinking about really intentional goal setting and, and, and standards. That's worked, that really took some true intention. And it's a little bit easier to continue, but now that they've seen that some of that's coming. No, I'm sure they've tried to get money.
Can I add? Yeah, um, one way, so we were on school improvement, higher level last year. We had, we wanted to spend hours, um, and we decided to, uh, focus on, um, going to the science improvement, um, training. Our building leadership team learned about supporting improvement. Uh, so that's how we spend our money, potentially. It's probably why we're, you know, and it's part of why we're making a book, uh, learning about the intentionality around it.
Well, then it sounds like that maybe that training would also just find the type of measures you're using. So you're actually capturing the right readers. Um, yeah, definitely kudos on the great numbers. My, my last question is, um, is, is WISF part of OSPI? Uh, the reason I ask, maybe I'll finish first. So, you know, we see that report card every year, rating the district, and like, this looks different. And I don't know if maybe the, the deciles isn't the same measure. Anyway, it just, it's telling a different story.
Yeah. Sure, that's a great question. So if you go on, you use Google, OSPI report card, you'll see a beautiful website. Or you can look at school district results, um, school by school results. And you'll see information that you can click through. And on the left-hand side, you'll see things like, well, and, um, multilingual learners. And then if you go all the way to the bottom, there's a little section that says WISF. And that takes you to the WISF, um, data specifically. And again, um, WISF is how Washington State chooses to report, um, the SA. SA requires the state, or a federal requirement that every state, in order to get certain funds, needs to put forth, um, certain types of data. And this is how OSPI has said, we're going to report this data that's required from, that's, uh, from federal SA.
Okay, and then this, this rates all Washington State schools equally? So we're, we're on the same ranking like as a big, large school, like an elementary school?
Yes. And again, um, it takes, it takes, and we didn't go into great depth on it, but it'll also take your student population as well also. It'll take all of your, um, any target group that you have, so all your students with disabilities and compare them to the students that got all of the distance. And so you'll see that all schools are, all students is basically taking all the calculations, all the target groups they have in all schools score. And then you have individual targeted groups that are compared against individual targeted groups across the district. So it gets.
And, and that's your, you know, board reports, you can review some of the information, you get a board reports, you make sure that we're putting our priorities into, to that data.
Actually, we haven't been collecting this data for very long, right? I mean, how many years now?
Yeah, so WISF has been around since, I don't, I, um, was it twenty? Somewhere around there.
Well, maybe a little bit later because SA came out, but it hasn't, we haven't. It's, it's had several iterations.
Yeah.
So I would say probably two thousand eighteen, nineteen. What happened is we would be figured in two thousand nineteen. So we have no route data for any of our elementary schools. So you won't see any good longitudinal data for Quincy School District for maybe a couple more years because that growth calculation, we have one year of growth, but I don't think that really tells the, the whole story. In two thousand nineteen, then shut down, and then you're going to take SBA for two years. That could be counted towards this. So Russ is relatively, as far as how a K five particularly is in it. The old school, this is kind of a old hat for them. And, you know, they, they've been improving for a long time, um, and, but I'm really proud of the work that the middle school has done. They're some of the highest levels of improvement that they see from here. So. The middle high school never, my, um, since the WISF, they're looking at.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, two things. Um, can you get your print today so that we don't know what happens, um, Thursday or Friday? So two of the main stories is, uh, how the district is addressing and, it's long for you. Um, addressing and thinking about AI. That we're, we are, it's on our minds, we are doing professional development, but we're cautiously leaning into this. So just think, we're around a lot of AI, especially thinking through the media, work every day. You can't sit on the TV or news without worrying about AI of some kind. Um, also, uh, an event on, uh, Bose and Bots. We had an event at the high school that, there's a gender gap that is in the STEM field, um, pretty massive. It's very male dominated, not a lot of female in the industry. And it was a way to get our middle school students excited about STEM field, especially computer science. So we had over a hundred girls at middle school unemployment to, to come up and do Bose and Bots and to be coding, make robots, to have, you know, the big stories. And then our, our grant profile is, um, the Pintos who own the machine too. So we're really proud of that, the park communication and town, we're excited to feature them. So that will be coming out. Uh, ELIO and two other students, I have participated in, in H round table with several other school districts on Friday. Um, it's pretty interesting, so it's, uh, two size school districts, uh, Central School Plan and several west side school districts, OSPI, Waza, some other district, um, agencies are there. We all have this diff- different versions of what post-secondary success means. So, um, the goal is to come up with a statewide, everybody meet on the same page about how we define post-secondary success and how we measure it. So once we define it, this changes definition on Friday, using student voices, about really powerful having the students in their own. Uh, then once we come to that current definition, then we'll start coming up with statewide metrics of how we are monitoring. Once our students leave our system, and it's just so, graduation, like I've said a hundred times, it's just not enough. It's like, you ran a race and then you stop right at the finish line, it went through the tape. So we're having those collective conversations, how do we get us to make the thing and run the end of the tape and how do we support that? We have a great graduation rate, but what you call is attention rate, what's your apprenticeship rates, what, what's the completion rates of those? And believe it or not, a lot of districts, they're just going right to the tape of graduation. So this is us collective thinking. So it was a really good conversation. I'll decide next year to talk about statewide, how we start measuring that success. Um, student board recruitment, we've started, um, we can see on social, socials. We started recruiting for our student board reps. Um, there you go. Uh, like we talked about in our work session, June seventh, at our view. So I'll just, yeah, let them know, you know, if you're interested in participating in those interviews. And we'll talk about it for leadership, about what that might look like. Um, in the past, we've had students kind of run the show, um, and where they're just to support them. Uh, graduation is, uh, June eighth at ten o'clock. Saturday, and the leader's indicated she's interested, a board president and attending. Um, so I'd move for one more, if someone else would like to attend graduation on June eighth. And represent the board to help hand out the forms, and we'd love to have you up in the day. So that's, with the shooting, you know, if you're. We are exploring a location change to QHS, our junior of the twenty eighth, as we're having our admissions commitment presents. Where they're going to school next year, what their college plans are. And then we're also doing, and that, the back amount of students that's moving to other space. So the twenty eighth, I'll let you know, we did change our locations at high school on that. Uh, May seventeenth, we have our inclusive field day at Quincy High School. I'm really excited about that. This is the first time we've ever hosted a, a inclusive field day. We're hosting, uh, Laura Franklin, which is Carmel, both fellow and us. There's going to be over, um, probably on a hundred students there. Yeah, over a hundred students will be there. And it's the first time we've hosted, so it's very exciting. If we'll go from ten to two, you're more than welcome to come and watch your, or volunteer, make sure that we do the work, but, um, you're more than welcome to attend that event. It's giving you really, really fun. And then SBA is wrapping up. We're, to the end of the month, we're making our way through it. So we'll do that, that will form our next list of stuff. So keep it in, working really hard on that, that's your month. So that is all I have. Any questions?
So a report for the Quincy High School. Um, prom is coming up and it's going to be at May eighteenth. And I believe it's going to be the Quincy High School. Um, it's, uh, an event called theme just occurred and it happened on the night, and it's, I was not there, badly. Sorry. Um, Window, uh, Window Relax is happening in the middle school. And from May fifteenth, May fourteenth, May fifteenth, and May seventeenth. Um, we are back to normal schedule as the Washington State times have been done. And there are twenty more days for schools, for us juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. And eleven point five for seniors. The seniors, they get off lucky.
I do want to mention, sorry, one, I'm going to help you report here. Our, I just found out today, Madison, uh, they did a teen event last weekend, our band participated. We finished first, and we beat Winangie, which is pretty amazing, so, yeah, really cool. Okay, just now.
Hey, where do you, you develop this, yeah? Hey, where do you hear this development, yeah?
We need to start thinking about a retreat day. Um so I think in that almost amount of retreats for some dates in August and December calendars are already going out. July is probably the best time since general people are very busy in July, looking for the July and other plans, so. Um we've had them on the weekends, we've had them in the evening, um so we've sent out a couple of options to you guys, is there a preference? And that's way out in dance and maybe think about. Do you rather do an evening retreat?
For how much time is in the tree?
Well, you don't, generally, but it will happen.
That's one more thing, yeah?
Life of a board member.
Oh, she puts a third week of July in the.
Yeah, I don't think, I I can't do July.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be here until I do that. So a little trial, some August dates. Just our Saturday, it's okay, tomorrow, maybe no Saturday.
Absolutely. Wow.
Oh, it's very good. It might be out for Saturday. Do you want to go to all of them?
I probably publicly shouldn't be.
Okay, well, we'll get some data from it, you all, and send that after this. August has more contribution than such a mature.
Okay, the policy review and adoption. Do we have any questions to get against the review?
I have a question on on one of, um we we do not approve procedures, we review them. Um but I had a question on, well, let's see, I'm jumping over, I'm jumping over the first reading ones. So if someone has a question on the first reading, I will hold off, let me go on the second.
I do have a question on the first tree. Um the policy twenty twenty three. Um if a little bit, I'm just curious, is there a curriculum specifically chosen for the digital literacy order? Other.
Yes, we have digitalization um in the library.
That was a good one. Other than that, I have questions about the procedure. This. Or for your procedure twenty twenty two P. Um. Should not correct or like kind of review. Oh, I was just on the comments talking about like how it's not necessary. So that's my first time seeing that, so I was just curious as to. Are we actually like making recommendations for that to be added or not, or do we just stay? Right, referring to like um not including the walking model, but you get it, so it's my first time seeing that specific comment, so I'm just curious.
Is that the one on page eight of Diana? Chair for Mr.
Two E.
It is new language that was brought and we we have stuck to in the past, stuck to um. Not having the social network being site group, not having being permitted um into that filter, this filter. And so it was new language, and he just wanted to highlight um as for the operations side of it. He did not have to include that, it's just this new language that has been omitted in the past.
I'm sorry, I was on.
So can I should I personally try and spice this one off or I?
Mm-hmm, just that on the comment, on the comment, it just says please review to determine. So since it's my first time seeing that, I was just curious, like, so are we discussing that? Like if we should add P, like every time it's mentioned or?
And I think with this, me especially, that's coming, Sean, you talked about this too. When they do connect to our network, that they still have to follow under our policies and procedures and then our filtering algorithm as well. So this is one where I recommend that we do a definite.
Yeah, and I'm not making a judgment.
Yeah, yeah, no, not at all, yeah, like.
So my question is, as far as like the board, are are we right now like exploring making a decision on it? Does it give us that option?
No, 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 this is, and this is a prestigious, and this is what we, Sean and his team would make that decision around tech. The board would be, and obviously want to get your input for sure, you know, um. But I would even refer to Sean, that's from what I kind of pop my head that we would definitely want to make sure if someone has a personal license. When authorized, that it's it's aligned with our network.
So that that's what I was referring to, though. So in the past, it's always been omitted. Actually, this was in the original. It was omitted, and so then he wrote, we wrote this note for Dr. Bridgen to review and to say, hey, do you still want to admit this? In the past, it has been, or do you want to include it in?
I mean, I think especially when we're having thousands of devices from our campus every day.
Yeah. Let me teach you for um the the information about, but we're just reviewing the staff or the instructions we can sign on it. I just had a question about um the digital images, does that include video? Uh on unacceptable network use age? I just want to, I just want to understand the definition of digital images, does that include video? It may not.
We would consider it.
Okay.
I mean, I I would consider it with that.
Okay.
And if you have any other questions too between now and then, just shoot me to email, you know. Um and then we'll answer, we'll respond, and then we always encourage, if you shoot us an email, take it back to the board meeting and ask it. Um you'll respond, see, that's what I was wanting.
Yeah, so um my question is on on uh procedure six seven zero one. So this is the recess and physical activity procedure. And um I mean, I was interested to see how the policy would be um used with new procedures. And so this procedure says specifically, schools should not withhold recess as a form of discipline unless it's due to participation in recess poses an immediate threat to safety of the student hours. And you know, this is not going to have practice always in our school district. And I'm wondering to what degree is current practice now and how widely is this one to be. Humanized to teachers and others who are on the frontline in the streets.
That is great. Great question. You know, I know that in the past, recess definitely was used as a as a punishment. We're trying less and less to to use that as a as a form of any kind of punishment, but I know we have. Schools that use recess as an opportunity to um have some reflection time too on what they've done and. You know, they're using that time for some sort of practices, uh if there's been issues. But as far as I'm aware, I I can get back to you on this relationship, I want to be certain. Uh they still get some recess time, but we do have a handful of students that is not safe for them to go to recess. And what we've arranged for them, either they have alternative activities within the building or they have alternative recess altogether, where they still get to block sack, that is an alternative.
Well, that aligns with this procedure, because it says unless they, you know, choice of their breath. But um but it's pretty clear when it says schools should not withhold recess as a form of.
That is new.
That's very clear.
And it is new, and that would be by adopting it, you would say that we can no longer do that.
Okay.
But there is, like what you're saying, right now, currently, there is a sort of practices, a sort of trickle that we use to bring a couple of kids to. Well, during that recess time, we're not gonna let them out and have those conversations.
Yeah, great. But yeah, I I hope you um follow this, you know, good alley.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
I don't have to remind you, um but in the same policy, the school district facilities, I know. These records aren't in the community, it's like how our um your track is closed.
Which one's that?
The school district facilities, page three of procedure sixty seven oh one. I'll just guess, is that where this is reflected? Um.
No, that would be more same use, policy and procedure. And we don't let our main stadium be used as walking track. Uh it's a trip field, it's our main park, so the competition, like the factors are really nice for. Our student athletes, but what we have done is we've opened up the middle school track. Uh which is the same level of track, so our community doesn't want to come walk, we provide that as an alternative.
Well, I think it's closed frequently.
The middle school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, you know, we opened it last summer from like five in the morning until nine at night. Well, we do have to close it sometimes, because we have to let the grass rest, uh because then we'll have the soccer that will come put on it. And we did close it like the last three weeks to make sure it was ready for our middle school. But yeah, that would be our facilities use.
As as far as policy, the same for the second reading. Um. I would just, this is more of like the process, so I know we talked about like we said, I feel this was, it's not the meeting before the meeting before. But I I might have commented.
Yeah, you do online, yeah.
Um very specific language, and I don't know if it's the same policy, but. One, so just the vibe is specific, is that is it then being modified after it's been and that included being added, or like how does that actually work?
The first reading is really, that's a, that's a great question. The first reading really will get that that down in. But we have the second reading and, you know, we're not comfortable with the language in the policy, if there's some some changes that we want to make to the policy, we can do multiple second reading.
Is there a way to show it clear, so like very clearly I can see that you look deep back from the board meetings. Was reflected, and so there's now the third level.
Sure, sure, I think that's, that's something we could do.
It it has to be written from the side of the board.
Yeah, it's a discussion.
I guess, when we're asking questions that are specific sections, then are we supposed to be like motion, uh actual change, a commutation? You know, I think it has to be.
It does on the second reading, but what we've done in the past is if the board just do an open dialogue and you have that form and that kind of a general grant. We'll just hold it back as a second reading, we'll come back and make those changes, we can do that in a second part, certainly.
That'd be great, just so we can track where we're at and just, so we're on the same page, because I know I'm moving track already.
Well, it's a question you asked, I remember the one was um around the middle, the meal charge. Um we don't charge for meals, so that that can be cleared up. Middle school recess, they have the option to go, they, all kids can go outside recess, like I said, last meeting, it's like Sunday or Friday. That's just, least everything about going to the high school, we ask when it's recess, I run into the recess, relax. Um but uh, you know, it's also an opportunity to stay inside, it's not, not everyone likes to go to recess and it's not a safe place for everybody. And where they feel most comfortable, but I know middle school, they they can get a proper reading of something.
Another question, so when you're talking about changes, were there some to view with D L C N or any ones that we talked about?
Some of those we did get changed, like the corrections, like the grammar.
Oh, those two.
Yeah, those those get fixed, as soon as you give them to me, we go through and we make those changes and then put presented in the secondary. They're not highlighted, and I think what you're saying is you want to highlight it, yes, this was just a change.
But even those like ground corrections, I don't think we necessarily agree upon it as a a board, but yet it's being reflected versus. Other ideas, like I'm just gonna use the middle school recess as an example, not the like when proposing, but um. Is there just helping clear ways to track suggestions or needs or orders and specific changes, specifically between the first and the second?
The challenges. Yeah, that was exciting. And but I I I would think that most of us should be fine with. With them implementing any, like a correction that you have for grammar or.
The grammar.
That's, that would be.
The grammar doesn't change the intent of the policy or procedure, or maybe some of the, like, you can. You could still approve a second policy and then you can just say, thank you, you know, thank you, those great patches, because, you know, they're not perfect, and you can make sure that that's. That's adopted without having to go back to the second reading.
Yeah.
For sure.
Nice. I usually do my best to try to get like my questions ahead to the board and then I do my best to then bring it up at the board at the public meeting, so. It's not that, I'm trying to get that, we all know at least what I'm questioning, what I have back. But, you know, I was just curious about that process, I normally do track, you know, I wonder if anyone else is.
We we.
Just wait till we get more.
Yeah, it's not like it's only one month.
But I think that's, you know, that's a, that's something we have done, I think it's a great suggestion, you know, what we have done is we we, you know, we've. May policies just like hang on, second reading, tell everybody to get rid. Um and we haven't done any of that policy, but that's something that we did, we did, we did. Yeah, it's a great suggestion.
And then the next part would be like, how do we open the board for those discussions to then add it? So I will, you know, my organization, figure out how to do that myself, but I'm curious, like, if, for example, that's the middle school recess. If that was something I was hoping to add to a policy, then how do we actually have that discussion as a board, talk about it, and then. I don't know, maybe draft something sort of by the second reading, then that would, would happen, is that how?
Mm-hmm, that's exactly how that.
Oh, okay. You're like bringing up at our, at our, at our meeting and saying, no, I have, I have a suggestion, but I didn't have to do that request for.
Do you have, do you have uh access to the Waza policy at the Excel spreadsheet?
No.
So I'll get you, because that has everything that we've done over the last two years. They created an Excel spreadsheet, I'll share it out again, um and so then you could track what day was approved, the different policies that we looked at. What was it gave, and then I do not have it on that sheet.
Yeah, and I I'll include that in the update.
Okay.
Just just. You can see it, and then the the Waza um legal policy news could really get back down. Um and I'd be able to hit that starter and then start keep you thinking and really get some questions um and that's a, so that's.
Anyone, we're, we're gonna automatically make this point.
Yeah, you should, I'll, I'll. And you should not let me know, and I'll go on the. I'll chat to the.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I just want to, I'm like, this is what I'm having, I will, I'll look at it further, but yeah, that was, that was. Um, so is it, we're talking.
Yep.
Well, I would notice that we approved the second reading option. Isn't this a?
All second.
Are there any questions? I'll go to the mayor.
Hi.
Anybody? The study is in fact, we will adopt the second reading. Okay, um. Okay, well, now we need to go into the executive position, my thank God, it's you first. Be very.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.